Welcome everyone. I'm Jay Hoyer, President of Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce. I want to thank all of you for coming out today. Especially want to thank the candidates for coming out and for Lynn coming out to spend time with us to hopefully introduce us to folks we don't know, educate us on the candidates, the issues, and what's going on in the community. You all have name tags, that's for a purpose. You're welcome to do networking while you're here so you get to know one another maybe a little bit better before you leave. My job this morning is just to say, be quiet and sit down, and then introduce the moderator. I'm very pleased to introduce the moderator. I think everyone here knows Lynn Leach. Lynn's a former Assemblywoman, former Chairman of the Board of the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce. She has done most everything. She has her own business and was one of the first women in Walnut Creek to have her own business. And so she's more than qualified to hold this position as the moderator. So with that, we really want to keep this on time because there are a lot of questions and logistically it's difficult when we have four candidates to try to get through as many questions as we need to. So with your help, we'll start on time and we'll stay on time with each of the questions and hopefully get you all close to on time. So with that, please welcome Lynn Leach.
Well, good morning Walnut Creekers. Hey, I'm delighted to be here and it's good to see so many open eyes looking back at me at this hour in the morning. But welcome to this Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau WalPAC Candidates' Forum. WalPAC is a political action committee and the purpose of which is to protect, preserve, and to further the private enterprise system. What a goal. And we have no political party affiliation with WalPAC. The WalPAC Committee or our trustees, there are seven of us involved, and let me introduce those people to you right now. Charlie Abrams, there he is. Scott Butler, there he is. Leslie Dawson. Tony Callengall. Rick Wise. Yours truly, and our Executive Director Jay Hoyer. Now, today's forum allows these City Council candidates to share their perspective with you, with our Chamber members overall, and with the general public. And thanks to Walnut Creek TV, you can go home later and watch and see if you were picked up on this video. Last month, the Chamber conducted a survey among all the businesses here in Walnut Creek. And today, you are going to hear through the questions that we asked, many of the issues that were brought up in that survey. You too are going to be able to ask questions because on your table, there are some plain white cards. And if you have a burning question, please write it down and do so legibly. And then Rick Wise and Charlie Abrams will be coming around to pick those up. They'll go through and weed out any duplicates and then they'll get them to me. So the last half of our program, 15 or 20 minutes, will be devoted to your questions. Now, once this session is over, WalPAC will make some recommendations regarding the candidates to the Chamber Board as a whole. Now, it's up to the Board to decide whether to pay any attention to us and go ahead and endorse or not. But if they do endorse, then probably we'll be coming back to you shortly asking you to invest in these candidates and in our city government. Now, using a very sophisticated scientific process, we put the candidates in the order of presentation that you will see here. And during the course of the morning, we will vary their opportunity to speak. So they all won't be at the first or all at the end. We'll split that up. Now, the way this is going to go is that they will have a two-minute opening statement and a two-minute close. During the course of the question and answers, some of the questions will be one-minute responses and some of them will be two-minute responses. In order to make sure that you stay on that schedule, we have Leslie Dawson sitting right down here with her itchy trigger finger right on the timer. And she will hold up an orange card that says 15 seconds. And that you'll know it's time to start wrapping up. The red card says you're finished. And if you don't stop, there is a trap door. But now, it is my pleasure to introduce to you our candidates. And you know, somebody once said, leaders are people who have a vision for tomorrow but a work ethic for today. These are the people that we bring to you this morning. Jay Barry Grove, he is an Assistant District Attorney here in Contra Costa County. Justin Widdell, a small business owner in Walnut Creek. Bob Simmons, who is finishing his first term on the council, currently our mayor, and Luella Haskew, Certified Public Accountant. So ladies and gentlemen, these are our candidates. Welcome them, please. All right, now, the random order you see up here. And so for the first opening statement, and this is your two-minute opening statement, we will start with Barry. And after he finishes, Justin, you just start and you just go right down the line, okay? Barry Grove.
All right, well, I guess I'm so lucky I get to speak first. Listen, asking a lawyer to be limited to two minutes is a dubious proposition, no doubt, but I'm going to try and do it. Just to introduce myself, my name is Barry Grove. I guess I started out my adult life going to college, like many of you. I graduated with a journalism degree after going to Cal State University Fresno on an athletics scholarship. And I did that for about a year and I quickly decided that being a starving writer was not the life for me. So I decided to go to law school and, you know, the dubiousness of that choice can be debated, but nonetheless, I did it. I went to University of Pacific. And I did very well. I graduated with honors there and I thought I was going to go off and make the big bucks. I did a lot of internships and clerkships at large litigation firms. And I thought that was for me, but somewhere in my third year of law school, the public service bug really got into me. And so I decided I wanted to be a prosecutor. And I was hired by the Contra Costa County DA's office, which was back in 1992. And I don't remember if any of you remember that year, but it was much like it is now. There was a housing market crash. And although I was hired in my third year, the day before I took the bar, they told me I didn't have a job here. Well, what was I to do? I came down here and actually volunteered. I put in about a good six months doing actual trial work, some of it right here at the Walnut Creek Muni Court, for free. I've been a prosecutor for 20 years, primarily as a murder prosecutor. I've had a lot of success doing that. I have become politically active in the last six years because we felt like law enforcement wasn't being prioritized and boom, there it is. Thanks, folks.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Justin Widdell, and I have a solid record of experience and action. I founded multiple successful startup companies and I've been an executive at some of the premier technology companies throughout the Bay Area. I currently own and operate my own small business right here in Walnut Creek that provides IT management solutions. I'm a very active member in the business community and I belong to multiple business organizations. I'm a proud Rotarian and I'm a member of the Chamber's Civic Affairs Committee. I volunteer to market and operate the Walnut Creek On Ice Program. And I chaired the downtown, or I've chaired some of the downtown Business Association's Wine Walks and I participated as a volunteer in the Chamber's Arts and Wine Festival. I'm also a proud graduate of the Leadership Contra Costa Program and I was recently elected to be the Vice Chair of the Leadership Contra Costa Alumni Association. I earned my Bachelor's Degree in Business Administration and my wife and I live in the Woodlands and we're raising two beautiful young girls. Like you, I know how difficult it is to run a business in these tough economic times. As your City Councilman, I want to lead the council's effort in investing in our business community and ensuring that we provide you all the tools necessary in order for us to be successful. I'll focus on streamlining all the city's business-related processes in order to make it easier to start and maintain a business here in Walnut Creek. From licensing to permitting and everything in between, I believe we need to concentrate our efforts on nurturing and protecting our business tax base while growing and fending off the competition from our neighbor communities that are actively trying to replicate our success. I look forward to answering your questions today and explaining how my background and my experience would be beneficial to all.
Well, good morning and thanks to the Chamber, the WalPAC, and to you Lynn Leach for being here and to all of you for being here this morning to listen to us talk and to help perhaps make, help you make the choices to which ones you wish to select for your next City Council. Sometimes it is surprising how quickly we forget. Four years ago, when I took office, we were in the midst of the worst economic crisis that I have ever seen. The forces of that economic tsunami brought our country and our city to its knees, but we did not give up. Instead, we sat down, we worked together, we worked hard. So what did we do? We first addressed the budget, which had significant budget projection deficits for the next three budget cycles, and we produced a balanced budget in each one of those. We then also tackled the issue of employee compensation, the skyrocketing pension and health costs of our employees. And while we have one more agreement that's still under negotiation, I am hopeful that by the end of the current contracts, all employees will be paying their full share of their pension costs. But we didn't stop there. We also decided uniquely for Walnut Creek that we needed an economic development program. So in the midst of trying to just balance a budget, we took $350,000 out specifically for the purpose of encouraging economic development in Walnut Creek. And that program is ongoing and succeeding. But our accomplishments did not end there. In 2010, we opened a world-class destination Lead Gold Certified Library that is well-known throughout this area. Second, we participated with other jurisdictions in the acquisition of the signature piece of Akalani's Ridge. These two accomplishments are truly significant. We did a number of other things, including fighting an outside developer to bring Neiman Marcus to Walnut Creek. Today, speaking as your mayor, I will just say that we are not just standing, but I believe we are walking together strongly to a brighter future.
Good morning, Moderator Lynn, honored guests. It's a pleasure to be here. My name is Luella Haskew and I'm running for City Council because I love Walnut Creek. It's that simple. I've chosen to live here, I've chosen to work here, and I've chosen to volunteer for many, many years here. This is the best of all worlds. It's the combination of small town where there are tight-knit communities and you can walk down the street and feel like you belong, but yet it offers amenities that are equivalent to major cities. The challenges ahead became pretty clear to me while I was a member of the Blue Ribbon Task Force. We've got some interesting times. Walnut Creek has been in an enviable position up to this point and continues to be an enviable position. But what was essentially a very lucrative, well-financed government is now under a couple of impressive strains. Our aging infrastructure requires a lot of additional sources of funding. We need to pay attention to it. There are lots of, there are pension issues, underfunded pension issues. There are a lot of pressures on our budget and we need somebody in the City Council who understands numbers. I'm a CPA. I spent my life understanding numbers. It's important to have this particular skill on the council. Thank you.
All right, now, as we start the questions, the official question, we're going to reverse the order. So it'll be Haskew, Simmons, Widdell, and Grove. Question, one-minute response. In a recent survey of the business community that the Chamber conducted, the city budget was perceived as the most important issue facing the city. Do you agree and what do you feel needs to be done?
Right in my wheelhouse. This is, this is one of the most important issues facing the city. And being on the Blue Ribbon Task Force for nine months, learning the intricacies of how the city is financed and the constraints on where we can raise money and the constraints on, and the demands on what we need to spend money. It's very important that we have people that understand what's going on. The task force spent a lot of time looking at what was the issue. The issue is the aging infrastructure. The issue is the rising costs of employees. 67% of the city's operating budget goes to employee costs. It's how to contain them. It's how to, it's how to fund the necessary repairs. Ultimately, I think it takes a combination of a number of different approaches. It can't all be done by cost containment and it can't, and will may need additional revenues.
Part of the answer is yes, budget is always a significant and important issue facing every city. We have a requirement and we don't have the ability to print money or to do things like the state does, to produce a balanced budget. We have done that in each of the last three cycles that I've had to deal with and we will do that going forward. We have some significant challenges going forward, including the fact that our long-term financial plan does not project an excess of revenue over expenses for, until 2019. And we have about $60 million in identified unfunded capital needs. But I really believe that when we sit together, when we work together, we will solve those problems as we have solved the problems in the past. We will also pay careful attention to making sure that this community stays a very, very safe community, which it is today.
Well, I was one of those that answered that business questionnaire and I too believe that our budget is the biggest issue facing our city. And I'll echo some of what both the previous two candidates have said. I think this is the biggest challenge. We need to find ways of rationalizing the money that we're expending on a yearly basis. We need to look at our budget and have a fully loaded cost so that we have a true understanding of what the services, the true cost of the services that we're providing to the city and have an understanding of where we can make adjustments and where we can make cuts. Failure to do so has drastic effects. We already have infrastructure that's crumbling. We don't have enough police officers on the streets. And unless we have individuals that have a firm understanding and a firm background in business and finance, we're going to continue to run into these problems and unfortunately, we have the opportunity of possibly seeing higher taxes in our future.
There's no question that one of the reasons that I'm here is because of the challenging economic times and because of the budget issues. I'm actually the only person up here that has spent 20 years working in government. I understand how government works. I understand that government is hugely inefficient. I understand the waste that goes into government because I've seen it firsthand. The reality is, is that government is not here so that you can make it run. The reality is, the government is here so that it can make an opportunity for you to run. And the only way that they can do that is by getting out of the way. And if they get out of the way, you people can prosper, which means there will be more revenue coming in, which means that we will then have the opportunity to provide the appropriate services at the appropriate level, which allows you to keep on doing what you're doing. These, this is the broad spectrum or the broad view. The reality is that we have the challenging times that we do now. There are so many situations in government that can be identified in order to streamline the situation and make it much more efficient than it is.
All right. We'll move on to the next question and this order will be Widdell, Simmons, Haskew, Grove. One-minute response, starting with Justin Widdell. In the same survey, the economic environment was rated as the most important issue facing business. What can the city do to help improve the economic environment?
I'm glad I got this question first. I think there's a lot of things that the city can do. I think cutting our expenditures, making sure that we do not get ourselves into a situation in which we do have to raise taxes. As business owners, I know that our taxes are coming due on the 15th. I know I hate writing that check on a quarterly basis as much as I'm sure you do also. But I think there's a couple of interesting things that we can do from a growth opportunity that, some of which the city's already doing. The Mount Diablo area that's going through the west downtown development process now, I think that's a prime opportunity for redevelopment and investing in our community. Additionally, I think we should be looking at north of Ignacio and redeveloping that area on North Main Street and I think that's another prime opportunity. I think we should be looking at the Shadlands and finally investing in that area and trying to make it a successful business park. And I think the biggest thing that we can do is focus on a downtown hotel, not a boutique hotel, but a hotel in our downtown areas that will draw people in and that we can utilize for things at the Chamber and other activities.
Two years ago, we started the process by creating an economic development program. And that manager of that program does exactly what you would like a manager to do. He brings people together and then he steps back and lets them create the magic that business can create. The city can also, as it is doing, through things like specific plans, whether out in the Shadlands area or in the west downtown, create a vision for the future that businesses then can recognize that that is really what the vision of the future is and work towards that together. And finally, I think the thing that we can do best is by working together with the Chamber and the Downtown Business Association, remembering that our downtown is a billion-dollar economic engine and we need to pay some special attention to our downtown. But by working together among those three organizations and by listening to business, I think that's the way the city can be most helpful to business.
I echo what the, what the mayor has said. I appreciate that it's very important to have downtown. It's important that we build a community that attracts people into it. We have the arts, we have the library, we have lots of amenities, we have this extraordinary vibrant downtown, we have world-class restaurants. We have to work hard to make it possible for everybody else to enjoy it. We have to get the word out. We have to let the know the world, let the world know that the restaurants and the stores and the amenities are here. We want more people to come to use our stores, to use our facilities. A restaurant, oh, excuse me, the hotel is important. We want people to stay overnight so that they spend more money in downtown. And we want to constantly remember it is business that drives our economy.
Yeah, there's, there's no doubt that there is a number of ripe areas for development and some of them have been mentioned, both the Shadlands and the west downtown area. I think it's important to remember though, that what government and a city council should be doing is creating and allowing an opportunity for private business to do what they do and develop those areas. That means things like not overburdening with regulation. That means creating an environment and an opportunity which allows that to happen. There is a lot of things government can do to slow that process down. There's a lot of things government can do to allow it to speed up. What you need is you need a city council with the proper perspective on that particular type of situation, which allows private business to do what they do, which allows our community to prosper and brings more people into it.
All right, for the next question, the order will be Simmons, Widdell, Grove, Haskew. This also is a one-minute question. Few months ago, the Walnut Creek was rocked by late-night violence downtown. In recent months, we have not heard much about downtown violence. What do you believe is causing the apparent drop in violence?
What really happened, and if you talk to our Chief of Police, he will say that if you have late-night bars, you will have an occasional fight. But what happened at the end of last year and the beginning of this year was the nature of the fights around our late-night bars escalated and created dangers for our police as well. And they asked us, the city asked the City Council to review the alcohol beverage serving ordinance and to impose new restrictions on it. And we did two things with that ordinance. We did impose new restrictions. We did give our police and our city the chance to do that. But we also simplified the process by which establishments that wanted to serve food and alcohol but closed at 11:30 could do so with just a very simple permit that they could get at City Hall without going through a formal public hearing process. And in addition to that, the chief created, and talked to the council about that, a special unit that focuses on the downtown, works with the bar owners, works with those establishments to make sure that those communications are in place so that when there's a problem that starts to arise, and the bar owners are the ones that see that first, they will call our police and we'll make sure that those problems are stopped at the beginning.
So first, there's been no bigger supporter of public safety in this community over the past few years than me. I've been advocating that we need more police officers on the streets for years and unfortunately, that hasn't really occurred, although they have approved two additional officers for this budget cycle. Bob did mention that they did create a downtown task force as it relates to the police department. But what he fails to mention is that that task force was shifted from our communities. We had a community policing division that monitored our neighborhoods and protected our schools and our children as they got out of school. Those police officers are now dedicated to downtown and they're doing a fantastic job of cleaning up the mess that some of these bars have, have caused. And lastly, I think what's really improved it is that the bar owners have realized that they can't get away with it anymore. We now have new laws in the books that will, that will take their licenses away if they continue to, their, their issues. And as a group, they, they've come together and cleaned up their act in conjunction with the police officers that are dedicated to the community.
With all due respect, I think I'm a fairly big supporter of law enforcement myself, having worked in there for 20 years. I have worked with the Walnut Creek Police Department. Part of my job is responding to the Walnut Creek Police Department when there are large cases involved. However, I can tell you this, is essentially Mr. Widdell is correct. The real answer to the problem was putting more officers in that particular area at the particular times that was necessary. Unfortunately, that means that officers are drawn from other areas that needed service. Quite frankly, you don't have school resource officers here anymore. And that is probably the best use of police officers that you can get. And I tell you that from experience, having worked in the juvenile crime area as well as the many other areas in law enforcement that I have. If you take from one and go to the other, you're going to end up with a zero sum. The reality is, is that you're going to have to create an atmosphere where bar owners, restaurant owners, and everybody else can prosper. Thanks.
Let's take this off the table right now. We all believe in public safety. We all believe in the appropriate number of police officers to do the job right. This was a particularly small, no, excuse me, that's the wrong word. This was a particularly immediate problem that the, the police responded to appropriately. The City Council does need to be cognizant of the amount of police officers on, on the streets. Statistically, right now, Walnut Creek has, has been in a declining criminal arrest record. I can't think of the word, but we have a declining issue with our crime. The police have done an extraordinary job in managing the issues that are going on the city. They're taking proactive steps and we need to honor that and we need to give them the necessary resources to do it appropriately.
All right, the next question is a one-minute and the order will be Widdell, Grove, Haskew, Simmons. The city's Blue Ribbon Task Force on Fiscal Health recommended consideration of a half-cent local sales tax. Do you agree or disagree with this recommendation and why?
I think I made my, my statement earlier. I'm a business owner. I think we don't need to raise taxes, in fact. I don't want to raise your taxes because I think you're already taxed too much.
Disagree, and let me tell you why. When I was a young Deputy District Attorney, they told me that I wasn't going to have a job anymore unless the state passed a half-cent sales tax. And I went out and And I went out knocking doors and passing out flyers, trying to convince everybody to pass that half-cent sales tax, which was supposed to be specifically designated for law enforcement. You know what happens when you pass those kinds of taxes because you think they're designated for some particular area or another? What happens is eventually they end up getting used for other things, and government uses a particular shell game. We have the money. If the money is used efficiently and appropriately, we can give you the services that you need in order to conduct your businesses. You don't need a half-cent sales tax, which is eventually going to be misused. The reality is, is every time there is a crisis, and we live in a boom-bust cycle. Every time there is a crisis, government can't come back to you and ask you for more money. When does it stop?
I was on that task force, and we did not come to this conclusion lightly. The city has done some pretty extraordinary things in terms of cost-cutting. They've done a lot to improve efficiencies. They've looked at trying to recover costs every place they could get. So when you look at what we have deferred because we had the shortfall in the revenue, it's important for us to understand that we need to pay attention to our structure, rebuild our infrastructure, pay attention to what we have, and take care of what we have, because if we don't do that, it's going to cost more in the long run.
I will start by just thanking Luella and her 13 fellow citizens who spent the better part of a year and thousands of hours producing 38 recommendations, the very last of which was the recommendation that if the city takes care of everything else, and we have been working on a lot of those things, then the city will need to consider a half-cent sales tax if the citizens of this community want to continue the services that they are receiving right now from the city at the same level. There is no question but that if you maintain our services, and you want to maintain our services, we are going to have to look at that. I don't think this is going to be a top-down process. To me, this is going to be a bottom-up process. The community needs to identify for us, for the city council, that it wants to continue the level of service that we are presently delivering or not. And if the decision is that the citizens of this community do not want us to consider that, then the city council will have to look at some further cuts in services. So for me, it'll be a community-based, bottom-up process.
All right. Now, the next question, you will have two minutes to answer, so really go for it. This is the order. Simmons, Haskew, Grove, Widdell. Much of the talk on the street these days is about government employee retirement costs, pensions spiking, et cetera. These issues are increasingly impacting cities, counties, and all levels of government. In your opinion, are these concerns warranted in Walnut Creek? Please explain.
The concerns that are expressed are warranted in every area in California in which your employees are covered by CalPERS with some of its approaches to funding pensions, and with regard to the rising costs of healthcare. I believe that this council, working with the employees of the city who also recognized that they had a shared interest in this problem, negotiated changes within the limits of state law, so that by the end of the current contracts, they will be paying the full employee share under CalPERS. There is a two-tiered system in place that new employees will have a much less generous retirement system, and they are paying a portion of their healthcare premiums. So this always has to be a concern. Anything that is a cost to the city has to be a concern to the residents, but I believe that we have, as a council, demonstrated with our employees that we have worked on it thoughtfully.
CalPERS, well, first of all, this is a nationwide problem, not just in California, and it is a serious problem. CalPERS has some huge issues in terms of how they calculate the liability. We commit, when the city joined the CalPERS system, we acquired a liability that we still have yet to fund. As the actuarial assumptions that are pretty much not realistic continue, there continues to build up an unfunded balance in the CalPERS system. We have to pay the difference. As cities go bankrupt, it's likely that, it's under the courts now, but it's likely that we will have to, as a solvent city, help fund other cities' liabilities. There is a tremendous, tremendous unfunded liability. On the Blue Ribbon Task Force, we struggled to get our arms around even what to quantify the liability for the city is, and we couldn't do it. In many, in one case, we couldn't even get CalPERS to even estimate what our liability was unless we said we were getting out of the system, and it cost us money to find out the number. This is a scary situation in terms of an unknown liability, and we must be beginning to be prepared for the result.
All right. Well, let me just put it right up front. I'm the only one up here with a government pension. And let me tell you right now, 20 years ago, I could not believe that I was forced to be paid on a credit card. But that's the way government decided that they wanted to do it. In other words, they don't want to pay you the money up front. What they want to do is they want to defer the money and have you gamble that you're going to live a particular length. I don't like it. I don't think a lot of employees like it. There are a lot of common sense things that can be done other than pensions. Quite frankly, I have suggested to Contra Costa County, who's my employer, that they allow employees to waive their pensions and take the money up front. The reality is, is that, as a government, doesn't want to do that because that costs more. So what is the answer? Quite frankly, I've spent the last six years dealing with the county government, which has a much larger issue than Walnut Creek, on this issue. There are a number of tweaks that can be done, and quite frankly, the governor has only signed a bill that barely scratches the surface. But there are a number of tweaks that can be done, and quite frankly, the issue is so complicated and so involved that it's unexplainable in two minutes. For instance, how many people really understand what employer's share or employee's share means? How many people really understand assumptions? Some of you do, most don't. The liability involved, let me just tell you right now, the liability involved is an unfunded liability. Is it an unfunded liability that is what's been advertised? No, it isn't. Is it something that needs to be solved? Yes, it does. Can it be solved in a number of different ways? For instance, limiting the liability pool, vesting age, portability age. Particularly, I know what's been floated now is defined contribution instead of defined benefit. That's a possibility, but it needs to be examined as to whether or not it's really cost-effective in comparison to the system you have now. It's not susceptible of a soundbite.
So, I'm a little upset I got to answer this question last. I think all my thunder was stolen. You know, a lot of what everyone said is accurate. One of the original questions was about budget and how that's the biggest challenge here in Walnut Creek. And I think the pension-related issue in healthcare is the biggest challenge as it relates to our expenses. Employees, of course, as I'm sure you can assume, are the largest portion of our budget. And so, of course, pension issues, of course, healthcare issues are going to be a huge concern and do affect Walnut Creek and the county and the state. Now, the city council has done a good job, and I commend them, and I commend the employee associations for taking a look at this and setting a new future. However, the effects of that, we're not going to feel for many, many years. Whether you have a two-tier, or three-tier, or 10-tier, it doesn't make a difference. The fact of the matter is, CalPERS has put us into a situation in which is going to be very difficult to get out of. And they continue to use estimates that if I got their rate of return, I'd be a very, very wealthy individual. So until the state fixes their problems, this is going to continue to be an issue in Walnut Creek. And we need to elect individuals that are willing to stand up to our state and our county and say, we need to start looking at these pension issues in a much different way.
Once again, let me remind the audience that if you have a question, please write it on the card and make sure that either Rick or Charlie gets it so that we can ask that. All right. For the next question, again, a two-minute response. We'll lull you in a false sense of security here, but two minutes this time. And the order is Grove, Haskew, Simmons, Widdell. The question, "Many business folks ask why the city can't simplify, shift, simply shift to a 401K retirement system similar to what many businesses offer their employees. How do you answer that?"
Well, the question is, can you or can't you? I suppose theoretically you can. Here's the problem. The problem is, is that it's not all up to Walnut Creek. It's a state issue as well as county and city issues. Now, let's suppose in the best possible world Walnut Creek could switch to a 401K system. And let's suppose we rounded it out for a second and said, your typical police officer, his pension is worth $50,000 a year. And so now, what you're talking about is you're talking about putting $50,000 cold, hard cash aside every year for that particular police officer. Now, the reality is, is what's happened, the reason that we have the mess that we do, or one reason that we do, is for many years, when the stock market was great and the housing market was booming, the cities and the counties did not contribute the money that they were supposed to be contributing into the retirement fund that they've all told you is CalPERS. So theoretically, the city was supposed to be putting money into CalPERS during the boom times. However, the assumptions that they made on their rate of return was exceeded, and it was exceeded quite a bit. So CalPERS would forgive the cities, and quite frankly, the employees, the money that they were supposed to contribute. Of course, we all know the good times don't last, the bad times come, and when the bad times come, crises is created. So then we start talking about 401Ks and everything else, and it sounds like a good idea because it puts the risk of the market on the individual employee and not on the taxpayers. That's an excellent idea. Quite frankly, I would love to be able to manage my own account because I guarantee you I can do it better than the government. However, you can't do it without competing cities, without the state and everybody else being involved. Walnut Creek can't just say, we're going to do that because you're not going to get the employees, including the police officers, necessary to work here.
I'm not sure about the legal situation. I certainly believe that on a layperson's point of view, you can't just yank one kind of pension plan and institute another one just because it's convenient. I think there are contracts that require that we do, that we participate in the retirement plan as it is. I think that there are issues with expectations from our employees. I think that there was a moral contract with the employees. We offered them one kind of pension plan, and then to just arbitrarily change it to another doesn't seem reasonable or feasible. So I'm not even sure it can be done. It would be lovely if it would be. I agree with Barry that it would be probably better for the employees of the city to be able to do a 401K plan, but I don't think it, I just don't even think it's possible.
And I think that probably is the correct answer at the final analysis. Ultimately, is the legal question as to whether or not it can be done or not. I know when I joined council and I saw the problem, and we all saw it, it wasn't that, of the burgeoning pension costs, I asked a simple question, which was, what would it cost us to get out? And if you remember the economic situation of the times, the answer was in excess of $50 million. We just didn't even, couldn't even consider that. I don't think we could consider that today. And so, while the objective, and I think it is a good objective, of trying to go to a system that is a pay-as-you-go system, and one that doesn't put this debt load on future generations, but one in which we are paying for the services, all the services that result from the people that we hire, at the time that we're receiving those services, makes a lot of sense. I just don't know how, under our system of government and respecting the contract rights of our employees and under state law, that we can do that.
So it comes down to probable and possible. Of course, it's possible. While I was not on the Blue Ribbon Task Force, I attended every meeting, and I was very involved in that process. And one of the things that they did analyze is, can we get out of the system? And the answer was yes. The problem is, is how much it's going to cost. Like Mr. Simmons said, when he joined, it was $50 million. Through the Blue Ribbon Task Force, they were doing rough estimates about what it would cost, and last year, they estimated it to be about $120 million just to get out. $120 million. So the probability of that is very low. But it is possible. If we get all of our employee unions to, or employee associations to agree, we get all of our employees to say, I want out of the system, and we can come up with $120 million, we can get out. There'll be a collection basket as you walk out the door. Of course, that would be the preference. I love being a business owner. I love my 401K, and I invest in it. My wife's a financial analyst, and so she's very active in the market. And I know that we enjoy running our own money, and like Mr. Grove said, I do a much better job than our government ever will, and I'm sure our employees would too.
All right. The next question, we go back to one-minute responses, and the order is Haskew, Simmons, Widdell, Grove. The question, "We all recognize we can't have it all. Therefore, which of the city's services do you feel, or do you see as lowest on your list of priorities if further cuts are needed?"
I'm glad he got this one first.
He?
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a when did you stop beating your wife question.
You're not asking me that, are you?
Do you want all the city department heads to stand up?
I don't know that you can actually peel apart any one particular thing and say that it's appropriate to cut. It feels like you should be able to say there's something in the system that's frivolous and we should wipe it away. I don't think that's real. I think that Walnut Creek, as a place to live, depends on a lot of quality-of-life issues. And even amazingly enough, I think that has a lot to do with our public safety as well. When we have kids who can go to recreational facilities and play sports, and we have the theater, and we have other things which could be the equivalent of school music classes, I think we lose so much, so that my answer is, I don't think there is anything particularly that we can identify as the lowest priority.
In the last budget cycle, we used something called priority-based budgeting, which we tried to get from the community and from our employees and from others, a sense of what were the most valued services that the city provides. And we use that as a tool to guide us with regard to changes that we might make or needed to make. And I think we will continue to use that process as a way to guide us to make decisions about what services we continue to provide in the future. I think, as Luella said, we need to be mindful that people move to Walnut Creek because of everything that Walnut Creek is. And before we start cutting and slashing services, we really need to have a thorough and careful discussion with the community about what it wants to be as a community moving forward.
I was very happy to see that the council wanted priority-based budgeting. I think that's a fantastic way of looking at what the community wants and making sure that we're providing the services that the community needs. Like Luella, I'm not 100% sure that we can identify one specific thing that needs to be cut. I think that involves the community, and the community input, and working through this priority-based budgeting. But what I will say is that focusing on cuts, I think it only divides us, and it only points out, you know, to make the art people upset or make the pro-business people upset. What I really think we need to focus on is how our council spends our money. The Blue Ribbon Task Force did a fantastic job that points out that our city council repetitively has built things without any understanding or comprehension of what it's going to cost five years from now, 10 years from now, to maintain it, to upkeep it, and then to plan for its replacement. Those types of processes are what we need to change, independent of what underlying cuts are actually necessary.
Okay. Well, not one of them identified anything. Listen, there are core services that any city, any county, any state government has to have. And the reason they have to have it is because it is necessary in order to keep a safe community, in order to keep a community that keeps building and repairing its infrastructure. that keeps building and repairing its infrastructure. That's what allows us to draw people in here. That's what allows business to flourish. That's the core service you pay for. After that, there are a lot of other services that make Walnut Creek attractive. But how we fund those services and when we fund those services depends on whether or not we can meet our core obligations first. This is what the politicians forget because they don't want to offend anybody. However, there are a lot of outside-the-box creative ways in order to get the things that are perhaps not core services, but necessary for the quality of life that we want to have without necessarily spending the traditional tax money that we have in the past.
All right, the next question, one-minute response. And the order is Waddell, Simmons, Haskew, Grove. And the question is, "Roughly 1,300 residential apartments are on the drawing board for areas in or near downtown Walnut Creek. Do you feel this is a good or a bad idea? Why?"
I'm going to sound like a politician here, and I'm going to say it's good and bad. I think Lynn would appreciate that answer. You know, for years, we, we've been hearing, and the state is, is pushing down these mandates to have affordable housing and because of the housing, housing market, you know, we, there was really no focus on that, or there wasn't as much focus on that as, as possible. And so now that we're getting it, people are, are starting to get concerned that we're overdeveloping, and the police are concerned that we're not going to have enough resources to, to be able to provide services to these new people in our community. But it is going to provide this low-income housing and the ability for individuals to afford to live in our community. On the bad side, like I said, how we are going to provide services to, to these new community members is up in the air. How are we going to protect them when we don't even have enough police officers on the streets today? It's going to be interesting to see how it, it ends up in the end, how many units actually do end up being developed. But it is, it should be a concern of all of us moving forward.
I think as Justin started out, it has some advantages and some disadvantages. I think what is important, one of the things that's important to think about as we look at those 1,300 or 1,400 units that are proposed for within about a half mile of the Walnut Creek BART station, is that if you're looking at and creating an area for higher density, you really do want to create it right as close to mass transit as you can because those people will be using mass transit a lot. And if they're closer to mass transit, then you can change their dependency upon the automobile. And I think that's a really positive aspect of the developments that are being proposed. And secondly, while the city does its zoning, if the zoning allows for the high-density residential, residential development, then, you know, we're, we're in a position of approving the style and the design as opposed to the specific development. And I think the other thing is that while the housing is not necessarily going to be affordable as that's defined under state law, it is going to reach a market niche that we really don't provide with our single-family housing. In other words, it will reach that young professional group, or maybe even the seniors in some cases, that wish to move into Walnut Creek but can't afford the single-family home. And so I think it provides an important niche that we need.
I know what Justin meant. It feels like two, two good presentations took away my thunder. I agree that there are some advantages to downtown. We need to have people to do jobs, to, to fill the jobs that we have. We need consumers to build our economic strength. We need to supply houses that are near public transportation, that have walkability to downtown so that they can enjoy walking downtown and going to the restaurants and shopping and the theater. We have bicycle paths. We have plans as a city to make sure that the density and the additional people can take advantage of a lot of things without having to get in their cars and drive. I look forward to having new people, the seniors, the young people. It adds to the vibrancy of our city, and it's a, it's a good thing. We just have to remember there comes some additional responsibilities.
When you, when you build housing like that, and quite frankly, it's more than a snap analysis, but when you build housing like that, what you're doing is you're bringing folks into the community, which is a good thing. We want to bring folks into our community because that means that those folks become part of our tax base. They, they come and, and go to our shops downtown. They go to our restaurants downtown. They increase your business. This is good. However, what needs to be analyzed is the corresponding strain on services that comes with that and how we pay for that. I can tell you right now that condensed housing takes a disproportionate amount of police services. It just does. When you put condensed housing next to a mass transit system, that too is going to cause a disproportionate amount of police services to be drawn in that direction. How much it is, what the cost is, what the benefit is to Walnut Creek as a whole and its tax base, those are what needs to be considered before you make those decisions.
All right, the next question, again, one minute. And the order, Simmons, Waddell, Grove, Haskew. Downtown Walnut Creek is home to many small mom-and-pop businesses. What should the city do to help these businesses survive and flourish during these tough economic times and into the future?
The city can work with the Downtown Business Association, can help keep, as it does in the evenings, the, the city streets clean, the area attractive, and it can continue, and it can make interesting investments in the downtown that, that animate it and activate it. And I think by approving even, even something like Neiman Marcus and Anthropologie, or, which is opening today, the city brings more people in, and the more foot traffic that is brought into the downtown, the more foot traffic that winds up going to the, to the small business owners that, that occupy that part of the downtown that is really between Mount Diablo and Civic.
I too believe in partnerships. I believe that the, the city council and, because I'm an active member of both, both business organizations, I believe we should be partners, partnering with the Chamber of Commerce and the Downtown Business Association. The DBA, through a generous grant from the, the city council, just went through a branding, a branding effort. And whether you agree with all the recommendations that came out of it, I think there's, there's a lot of good things that the city can support and get behind. But most importantly, I think the city can correct its financial problem. Again, the financial problem that we're facing has a greater effect than just on all of us as community members. It affects our business community. Just as a, a small example, right now, they're talking about the possibility of raising our taxes a half cent. How's that going to affect all of our individual businesses? Additionally, our infrastructure is crumbling. The, the infrastructure that our customers utilize to, to come to our businesses are in need of desperate repair and are crumbling. City finances is the best thing that we can do in order to support our business community from a city council perspective.
The best thing that we can do, in my opinion, is we can support core services which make Walnut Creek attractive and safe for people to come and visit and live here, which means our businesses flourish. Part of the character of Walnut Creek is the independent mom-and-pop business. It's a great thing to have, and using the bully pulpit to support that is also a great thing. Quite frankly, in my opinion, what we need to do in addition to supporting core services is get out of your way. Make it easier for business to operate. Streamline regulation. Make it easier for you to operate. And quite frankly, I agree with Justin. We don't need a half-cent sales tax to further take that money out of your pockets when we can already support core services with what we have. Thanks.
I don't know that the question actually addressed the sales tax. It's getting people into downtown and getting people to go to the bigger anchor stores. And then, as a result, they are already there. They will stop and they will shop in the mom-and-pop stores. The sales tax is kind of a separate issue. And there is also some statistics that have proven that it doesn't stop people from coming into the city. For example, the people who are coming into the city are using our services, and it's a way to get them to help fund it. More and more cities are going to have half-sales tax, and Walnut Creek will not stand out. Concord has already instituted it, and they, and they have not seen a drop in sales. Is that a 15-minute or is this? Well, I've already lost my train of thought. Get more people downtown.
All right, next question, one minute. The order is Haskew, Grove, Waddell, Simmons. Broadway Plaza is proposing a major upgrade to their center, which may include adding approximately 300,000 square feet of net new retail space. Do you support this effort? What are your feelings in general about it?
Well, I like shopping. Which my husband will tell you is an absolute flat-out lie. I actually hate shopping, but I like shopping in Walnut Creek. It's, it's a good idea to constantly refresh something that attracts people. I've said, excuse me, I'm sorry. I've said before that what we don't want to be is the city equivalent of Restaurants Impossible, where we've let what was a thriving business community rely on its laurels and not meet changes to meet what people demand. If we build a better mousetrap, we can continue to attract people into our downtown. We can continue to fund our, ha, we can continue to fund our, our city services, including the additional police officers and public safety issues. It's important that we keep this as attractive as possible for the mom-and-pop stores, for everything else that we've talked about today.
The bottom line is, nothing, nothing stays the same. Walnut Creek has a particular character, and it offers a particular quality of life that we all value, and that's the reason that we're here. But nothing stays the same. You're either growing forward or you're growing back. And the reality is, is that Broadway Plaza is going to change. It's going to change over time. And when it does change, if we are there to make sure that the change is a good one, it stays within the character of the city, and it's one that allows businesses to flourish and allows the tax base to increase and attracts visitors to Walnut Creek, that's a great thing. On the other hand, we also have to be cognizant and make sure that the corresponding services that are necessary to support that kind of increase is also in place. All too often, government thinks one, two, three years down the line. They don't think 30 years down the line. They don't think 20 years down the line. That's where we need to think now.
I want to echo Mr. Grove's comments to a certain extent. The fact of the matter is that Broadway Plaza is going to change, and we have to be involved in it, not only as a business community, but also as community members. We need to make sure that we get out there and we tell, tell them what we want to see so that the character of Walnut Creek remains intact. I think it's also important that as Broadway Plaza changes, that it doesn't leave the traditional downtown in the dust. I think that would be a horrible idea, and we need to make sure that those mom-and-pop stores are protected and that the two, the two areas of our city tie in together. Now, what I will say is, as I was saying before, the, the DBA just went through a branding effort, and the gentleman that they had running at Roger Brooks, he was very excited to be in Walnut Creek because there's 10 or 15 communities around us that are going through his services that when he goes to them, they all say, "I want to be exactly like Walnut Creek." And unless we continue to invest and reinvent ourselves, we have a lot of competition around us, and we're going to start losing our businesses to these other communities.
The 300,000 square feet of new commercial development that was mentioned is within the general plan allowance for Broadway Plaza. And I think whenever you have a significant property owner who wishes to invest a huge amount of money in your community, you have to welcome them into the community. It doesn't mean you have to approve how they propose it or what they propose. It still has to go through all of the processes, through the design review and maybe the planning commission, to make sure that that development really is what Walnut Creek as a community wants going forward. But I recently met with a developer of a downtown housing project who said, and expressed his appreciation for the fact that when we listened to his presentation, at the end of that, I said, "I welcome your investment in our community. We need it."
Once again, one minute. And the order would be Grove, Waddell, Haskew, Simmons. Walnut Creek has sometimes a less-than-stellar reputation for downtown parking. Overzealous enforcement, expensive fines, lack of vacant spaces, et cetera, are cited as problems. What can you tell the downtown business folks in this room that if elected, you will do to improve the situation?
Oh, I'm going to give everybody a free parking pass. No, the bottom line is, I'm, I'm a consumer in Walnut Creek myself. I love Walnut Creek, and I hate the parking. And I know that we want to build up our businesses here. I know that we want to attract folks here, and we've done a good job of that. We have tried to do a lot with the parking. It is impressive, the garages that we have downtown. As we bring in other businesses, like Broadway Plaza project, there has to be corresponding parking. We all understand that. Are we ever going to get to the point where there's a parking place for every individual that comes downtown? It's not going to happen. It just isn't. Can we improve it? Yes, we can. One of the frustrating things I see downtown is we have a lot of empty lots at night that, if I explain the city council regulation to you, it might shock you, but we allow people to, we allow a particular company to have those lots and put fake tickets on the lots, on the cars that come in there. I think there's some improvement that can be made in that situation.
I take a little bit of a different approach to this. I don't think that, I think the myth, or, I think that we have any, the idea that we have a parking problem in Walnut Creek is a myth. I come down here all the time. I have been a victim of getting a parking ticket, and I do think it's a victim. What I, I don't think that we, what we do well is point people in the right direction. Sure, I don't think, I don't think anyone believes that they should be able to park right in front of their shop, nor should they be able to stay there the entire day. We need to do a much better job of pointing people to, towards our awesome parking garages, where there's lots of free space. And secondarily to that, we need to shift the focus of how we charge for that. We want to encourage people to come to, to these parking garages by lowering the fees. If we lower the fees at the parking garage, more people will come and we'll have more, and we'll have better parking on the streets.
There was a downtown business parking task force, Kish headed, and they, they produced the recommendations. I support the, the findings of that, that council. But then, as I've thought about this, I've thought, we're a two-people family, my husband and I, and we're part of the problem. We both come from different directions to go to dinner at night and think it's totally appropriate that we both have a free parking space pretty close to the restaurant we have. I think we need to encourage our, our citizens and our visitors to be smarter about parking. Part of the problem is, everybody, I disagree with Justin. Everybody wants to be right out in front. We need to make our, our streets more walkable. We need to make more attractive places to do. We want to get people in the parking lots and out-walking, going by mom-and-pop stores and stopping at our restaurants and our activities.
Prior councils adopted a "park once and walk" philosophy, and that's why you see the city-owned garages on the outskirts of the downtown. When Kish and I were elected in 2008, one of the common comments at that time and complaints was about parking. And so former Mayor Rainey and Mayor Protem Rajan headed the task force, the parking task force, that produced a number of recommendations that the city is in the process of implementing. One of them dealt with car counts on the garages. And the car counts that you see on the Broadway Plaza garages now are the result of the Neiman Marcus Development approval. The second thing is that we brought in a new technology on our parking meters, and you can pay now by credit card when you go, and in a little while, you may even be able to pay by phone. And then the last thing, and we recently led a contract to develop a wayfinding system. This is separate from- this is separate from the branding exercise, but a wayfinding system for our downtown so that people can easily find where a parking garage is or where other, you know, activities or events or places that they want to go to are located.
All right. The next question, one minute. The order Simmons, Haskew, Grove, Waddell. Leadership is many things, including being able to make tough and potentially unpopular decisions. How would you approach making a politically unpopular decision and how would you communicate that decision to your fellow city council members and the community?
I think you approach any decision, whether politically popular or unpopular, by first asking some questions, learning about the issue, asking what the community thinks, asking if it's a development, community issue, what the development community thinks. And then, what you have to do when you're on council, it's not what I do on council, it's what we do on council. When I was first joining council, the then-city manager said, "Bob, you have great ideas, you just need to learn to count to three." He was only partially correct. You don't need to know how to count to three, you need to know how to get to three. And that's a matter of working not just with the community, but your fellow council members to provide the best possible decision for the community going forward.
Leadership isn't just dealing with unpopular situations. Leadership is laying out a vision and placing the decisions that get you to that vision in perspective. So, I think ultimately, when all is said and done, you need to have the courage of your convictions, you have to have a belief in where you're trying to go, and then you have to listen to people along the way. A lot of times, an unpopular decision becomes the best decision, but a lot of times, what seemed the right decision is unpopular for a very good reason and it's also important to listen to the message that you hear when you're dealing with a controversial subject.
It might not be too surprising, but I've had to make a lot of serious decisions. Those decisions often involve life and death, to be quite frank. The reality is that the buck stops with you and if you're willing to stand up and be counted and be accountable for your views, people will respect that. But they'll only respect that if you're willing to listen to them. And if you're willing to listen to them with an open mind and you're willing to have your mind changed if what they're saying makes sense, and if you're willing to modify your views if what they're saying is making sense. Taking a stand and simply deciding that's my way or the highway is not what leadership is. Leadership is being accountable for your views, but being willing to listen to other people and modify your views when shown that perhaps their ideas are helpful, too.
I hope I don't lose votes over this, but I'm a big Judge Judy fan, I admit it. And one of the things that she says is, "Listen twice as much as you speak." Now, while I don't always follow that, that is the guiding principle that I operate on. And last time, when I ran in 2010, one of my statements was, "Listen, comprehend, reflect, then act." And I think that's a thing that all of us can aspire to, listening more than we speak. Because when you listen, you pick up on little tidbits, and I think that's what Bob was trying to get at. And then, once you listen and you're able to understand what is going on, it's about being honest. I'm a authoritarian. There's four guiding principles that we rely on. The first one is, is it the truth? And a lot of that is, are you speaking from your heart? And through speaking the truth and through speaking from your heart is really how you educate the other individuals of the perspective in which you're coming from in an open and honest, communicative fashion.
All right. Now, we're going to go to your questions. So, for these, we'll allow one-minute responses as well. And for these, I'm going to start right down the panel, Grove, Waddell, Simmons, and Haskew for the first question. In 2002, voters approved a special tax to ensure adequate library hours for the community. What is your position on renewing these funds and how would you work on this?
Well, I'm going to tell you something that most politicians won't tell you. I'm not going to be able to address the intricacies of every issue. I don't know the intricacies of that particular issue. I do know of the various problems with the library as it has occurred over the last several years. The problem that I have with designated taxes is that it becomes a shell game. In other words, if you designate a tax for a particular use, then what happens is, is that the particular government entity will then take the money that was otherwise designated for that use and use it for something else. It doesn't matter whether you, let's say you passed a tax to be used only for police officers, and normally, the city would fund the police department with a certain amount of money. Then they will just take that particular money that corresponds out of their general fund money. So, designated-use taxes usually end up as shell games.
I'm not going to disagree with that. I think some of that of what Mr. Grove says is correct, it does end up being a shell game. But I think more importantly is that we speak a lot about our processes being community-driven. And in 2002, our community decided that it was important to have additional library hours. And I see no reason, now that the tax has expired, that we don't go back out to the community and we ask, "Do you want to continue to pay for these services? And if so, here are the benefits that you'll receive from it? And by the way, this is the extra cost."
Libraries are one of the core institutions in our community. They provide so many benefits to us, both the Ignatio Valley branch and the downtown branch. When you go in there in the afternoon after school, you see many, many kids who are there partly because both of their parents work and they have no other safe place to go. So, it's really also an important part of the safety of our community and the safety of our youth, as well as an excellent way to educate them. And our libraries also provide a phenomenal amount of programming that we, as a community, benefit hugely from. So, I think we definitely have to find a way to keep our libraries open, but I'm not positive as to what the best way to do that, and I think that is a discussion that we will be needing to have prior to June 2014 when those revenues are gone.
The library was 100 percent, well, the library was controversial. It's built, it's an extraordinary building. There is the second library and we need to keep them operating. I don't, I think that it's important that we have, let me start again. The library is an amazing place. I spent hours there when I was a child and I talked to people and all people, business people, mothers with tots, kids, adults, come to our libraries and use them. It's important that we make them available during the hours when they can come. We need to find substantial, excuse me, sustainable funding, stable, sustainable funding, so that we can keep them open. I think that it is important that we acknowledge that it is the busiest library in the county and we have an amazing asset in that library.
The next question, one minute. And the order is Waddell, Simmons, Haskew, Grove. What are your thoughts on Safeway's proposal to develop over 200,000 square feet of retail at the corner of Oak Grove and Ignatio Valley Road?
Well, I'm actually involved in that. I'm the president of the Woodlands Association, which is right next door to the Safeway project. And I've been to, I think I actually unfortunately missed one meeting, but I think I've been to all of them except for one, and I've been actively involved, of course, as the president. I'm not for or against it. My major concern is process. We entered into this process that it's going to be community-driven and that the community is going to decide what, if anything, should be of that property. And unfortunately, and I've written on this, many articles in the Patch, I don't believe that's the process that we're following. The community, number one, is really overwhelmed by the number of government officials that are on there. There's only three of the 11 individuals on the task force that are going to determine what's going to be placed there from a specific plan recommendation. And secondarily to that, the community has been out and voiced their opinions in every step of the process. The issues are collected, but it doesn't seem like we're going down the right process because those, the collected material and feedback that the community is providing is not being taken into consideration.
On this point, we probably are not in agreement, Justin. I am one of the two people that sit on the advisory committee, council, on council, that sit on the advisory committee. And we have been listening to the public. And at the last meeting, we spent the entire meeting talking about all the issues that the public had raised. And the public is concerned about the traffic and the other things that might flow from that development. But I'd like to take a step back for a second and say, "Let's pretend that particular 25 acres is not zoned at all. Would you zone it for four large office buildings now?" And the answer is no. Would you zone it for a large Costco store? And for me, the answer would also be no, for different reasons. So, what really has happened here is Safeway, at the urging of the city, has funded a process which is a community-based process as opposed to just going through the planning commission and the design review commission, to give the community another opportunity to have input to design something between a Costco and something between four office buildings that will actually serve the entire community in a much better way than what we have there right now.
This is one of those times when it's a conflict between the private property owner and the community around it. The city can only do so much in terms of what they can offer. And so, it's the job of the city to make sure that what the private property owner bills on that property is appropriate for the city within the general plan, that mitigates traffic, that is designed appropriate for the area, and with the input and the care of the people around it and the cooperation of the people building it, this is how the process should work. And so, I don't know that I have an opinion about what should be on that property. What I do have is the process needs to happen and...
Well, the question originally was, "Are you for and against?" And quite frankly, I'm happy that none of them took a position here because the reality is that until you get all of the facts in front of you as to the impact there, the costs, the viability of other projects, you can't make that kind of a decision. Right now, they are going through what, and I know it's going to sound cliche now, the process, but they're right. They're right that you do have to go through the process because you need all of the facts in front of you before you can make an appropriate cost-benefit analysis and decide whether or not that's the appropriate project for that particular area.
All right. One minute. And it's Simmons, Haskew, Grove, and Waddell. What is your position on the Walnut Creek Council taking an active role in working to consolidate all Walnut Creek schools into the same district? For example, breaking away Northgate, Foothill, et cetera, from the Mount Diablo School District?
When I was asked about this earlier, I think it's appropriate to have a vision of a single school district for all of Walnut Creek. Whether you're looking at that from an economic development standpoint or from the standpoint of how a city works with and supports its schools, it's much easier from a city perspective to have a single school district to deal with rather than five. And the present situation is very difficult to work with, whether you're talking about how you'd be fair with regard to all the students, with regard to funding a school crossing guards, with regard to the cooperative agreements that you might have at various school facilities. And so, as a long-term vision, that is really what I would support. The issue and the problem is that you have five school districts and there's not a single board member on any of those school districts that support any approach towards consolidating the school districts. And I think really, that is where we need to, you know, those that are in favor, that need to be focusing the energy to changing the school district's view of whether or not they are willing to work with Walnut Creek as a single entity.
I agree with Mayor Simmons. It would be lovely if we could have one school district in Walnut Creek. It would make everybody's life a lot easier. I also agree that it isn't in the purview of the city council to make that decision. The school districts do control their own districts. And so, the best we can do is have that vision and try and work for it. But in the meantime, we have lots of other things that we need to focus on and doable projects are important to me.
Here's the bottom line. The bottom line is, it's a very emotional issue. It's an emotional issue because people have made decisions where to live based on a particular school district. And once they've made the decision to make the biggest investment in their life, buy a house, then you change the rules on them, they start getting extremely emotional about it. I understand that. Optimally, they're correct. One school district would be the better way to go. There's only so much that a city council can do in that regard. However, one thing that they can do is they can be in the community, listening to the arguments on both sides of the issue and educating the folks as to what the raw facts are and what the benefits and detriments are. Right now, I don't really see that our city council is doing that. Quite frankly, I think our city council tends to avoid this issue because it is such a highly-charged emotional issue.
I want to echo a little bit of what Mr. Simmons and Mr. Grove said. I, too, have the shared vision that we should have a unified school district. I think it will have a lot of benefits, you know, economically and for unifying our city. But Mr. Grove brings us up a good point. We need to educate the community and advise them on what they can do in order to make this happen. This isn't going to be a city council-driven thing, it's going to be a, of course, they would be able to support them, however, it's going to be the community demanding that this occurs. But most importantly, I was reading an article a few days ago, and one of the things that was said, and I'm a little concerned about, is that we, as the city council, meets with the Walnut Creek Unified School District, but we don't coordinate and meet with our Mount Diablo School District officials. I just think that's appalling and through that type of meetings and education and understanding, I think that we would be able to pull together a coalition that would be able to support a platform like this.
All right. Next question, one minute. And it's Haskew, Grove, Waddell, Simmons. Should the city establish a community facilities district to recover costs of services to new multifamily development projects?
Being on the Blue Ribbon Task Force for a long time and trying to understand the city's issues, one of the recommendations was to look and be creative about developing cost-recovery methods, situations. I think that creative doesn't always necessarily mean abusive and I think that the community facilities situation acknowledges that there are some needs by the high-density housing and the new use of land, but it also doesn't recognize that there are also lots of other houses in high-density areas that wouldn't be participating in this kind of taxation. I think it was an idea that should have been addressed. I don't think it's an idea that actually really works in the long run, and so, I'm not a fan of it.
I think it's something you have to be very careful of. Before, I mean, a lot of times, good ideas sound good before you actually go into them, look at what you've got and actually make a cost-benefit analysis. The first thing government should do is be very careful about what they tax and what the long-term and unintended consequences are. I don't think we know that. And before we go off deciding to do something like this, I think one needs to sit back, look at the long-term consequences, look at what both the pros and cons are, and then make a decision.
I understand both sides of this argument. I understand that we don't have enough police officers on the street, but I also understand the investor and developer perspective. I'm not for a tax like this because I think what government doesn't understand is what taxes actually mean. It's just not taking money out of a business pocket. Because as business people, we understand that that cost... Because as business people, we understand that that cost is going to be passed along to the end customer. So to us, sure, it's a tax, but again, to the end customer, as we're getting squeezed from all sides, it just is -- the cost of everything is just getting outrageous. So I just don't think that going down this path, number one, would raise enough taxes to make it worthwhile, and number two, that it's the right path to go down in general.
If this idea is, again, presented to the city council, I presently do not know how I would vote. I do know what we did when it was presented to us earlier this year, which was the underlying analysis that was presented by the staff and by the consultant basically said that the cost of providing city services, principally of which was police services, to these high-density developments exceeded the revenues that the city would receive from property and from sales tax attributable to those developments. And so the question then has to be, are you being fair to the new development or are you being fair to the residents who are you're actually asking them to bear a greater portion of the cost of supporting those services? I don't know the answer. I do know that when it was presented to us as a council, we felt that it had not been adequately vetted in the community and that that's what we really needed to have done. By community there, I also meant the development community, to give them a chance to thoroughly evaluate the numbers, to see if the numbers, in fact, support the fact that there is that increased burden on the residents from that larger multifamily development. And then we will proceed accordingly, depending upon what the facts say.
All right. One minute. And it's Grove, Waddell, Simmons, Haskew. Arts enrichment is a vital component of our quality of life as well as our economic drivers. Please outline your plan for sustaining our performing visual arts and education programs.
Well, let me first say that I agree that it is a vital part of Walnut Creek. And quite frankly, it attracts people to live here. It attracts people to visit here. It's perhaps something that we should look at as to whether or not we want to fund it and to what level in different times. However, the taxpayer dollar is not the only mechanism for looking for funding. There is a lot of opportunities for both private and public interests to fund these types of things. And quite frankly, if you have the appropriate people in leadership positions that are actively working with the business community and private interests in order to do things like this for the community and actively recruiting, then you have somebody who's actually doing something outside the box and thinking creatively and, quite frankly, helping Walnut Creek.
I too believe that the arts, open space, and recreation programs are great in Walnut Creek. In fact, it's one of the main reasons why my wife and I moved to Walnut Creek. And I look forward to, as my children grow, going through the arts programs and enjoying everything that I didn't get to enjoy because I didn't grow up in Walnut Creek. But I think there's two things that we can do. The first one is that we need to focus on fully-loaded costs. We have to have an understanding of what the services actually cost to provide to the community. And for things that we actually charge for, we have to make sure that we're recouping that in our fees. That's going to lower the total overall cost of the services that we provide. And secondarily, for the fees that we can't recoup, we need to look at private-public partnerships. Look out into the community. Look out to businesses and say, "How can we work together in order to provide such great services to Walnut Creek?"
The arts are an integral part of what we are as a community and what our community identification is. When my wife and I moved here in 1987, there was no Leshur Center. We went to Sun Valley rather than Broadway Plaza -- sorry, Shelley, because it was a nicer place to go, a place you could go with your kids. And the only restaurant I recall ever going to at that stage was Primus, which is still around. In early 1990, 1991, and there was a big discussion and debate over it, the Leshur Center was built. And what has happened since then is that you've seen a phenomenal resurgence of our downtown, a place where people -- which is an international dining destination, a place where you can say, "Let's just go eat in Walnut Creek," and then decide when you get there what kind of food you want to have or what kind of restaurant you want to go to. So it's a truly phenomenal place that I think the Broadway Plaza, which I do now go to instead of Sun Valley, and the Leshur have really made our downtown. And so I think it is entirely appropriate that when we look at investing our money, we need to realize all of the benefits of that and not just -- and proceed accordingly.
I'm a member of the Board of Diablo Regional Arts Associations, one of those public-private partnerships. The theater is critical to downtown. It draws people in. It is a revenue generator. If you take into consideration not just what it costs to have the theater operating, but you also -- and the funds from the tickets, but also the multipliers that happen as the patrons attend restaurants, as they go to the stores, as they enjoy the whole experience. It is amazing what the theater does for us. So I think that arts -- Lynn, would you repeat the question so I answer it specifically in 15 seconds?
Arts enrichment is a vital component of our quality of life. Please outline your plan for sustaining our performing visual arts and education programs.
Okay. And the answer is, there's a lot already in place, and it's doing an amazing job.
All right. Now we have come to the closing portion of our presentation. These will be two-minute closes. And please incorporate in your close the comment that Walnut Creek, is it going in the right direction? And what would you do about changing it or keeping it on that path? The order is Haskew, Simmons, Waddell, Grove. Two minutes.
Got it. The Walnut Creek has had an amazingly visionary history. It's the leadership and the citizens of our city have contributed hundreds and thousands of hours making it what it is today. They launched a city that is an amazing place to be. So of course, I believe that we're going in the right direction. Do I think that there are challenges ahead? You betcha I do. Do I think we need good people, not only on the city council, but we need good people to take active parts in making sure that our community grows? We need a very strong business community. We need to honor our neighborhoods. We need to do what we need to do to keep Walnut Creek this amazing place. So do I think Walnut Creek is going in the right direction? It's an easy answer, yes.
And for me, I'll answer the questions at the beginning and say the answer is yes to both. We are headed in the right direction, and we always need to be willing to make changes. But I would like to talk a little bit about some context because when I was first seated on council, the number of years of experience on council dropped from slightly over 50 to about 30. When former Mayor Rainey retired in 2010, the number of years of experience on council dropped from above 30 to below 20. With the retirement of Councilmember Screll and the departure of Mayor Pro Tem Rajan, the number of years of experience on council will be a maximum of 12. And if the voters of the city do not reelect Bob Simmons, it will be eight. When you look -- [laughter] When you look at the decisions that are pending before this council for the next four years, how serious they are, how important they are to the future of this community, I believe that what everybody needs to do is think carefully about that and vote for the most proven, the most tested leadership that you can find, and those with leadership success. And I believe I am one of those people. I am running for reelection because I believe in Walnut Creek, and I believe this is a phenomenal community in which -- in one in which if we listen to each other and we work together, we can accomplish some truly amazing things. And I would be honored to have your vote and your support as we continue to lead our community to an even better Walnut Creek in the future. Thank you.
So I'll answer the question upfront, too. I believe we are finally heading in the right direction. But independent of your belief in the root cause of the city's current financial mess, the city council has been forced to cut millions of dollars from our operating and capital improvement budgets, and they're currently evaluating a half-cent sales tax hike. All this while the infrastructure that all of us depend on for our businesses is deteriorating and crumbling. I'm sure you've heard this term before, but City Hall likes to call that the new normal. In my businesses, I've gone through good times, and unfortunately, I have gone through down. In the downtimes, when cuts were necessary, I didn't look at that as the new normal. I looked at it as an opportunity, an opportunity to shift gears and focus on our future and invest in the future. If elected, I'll collaborate with our neighborhoods and our business community in order to focus our efforts, not just on the status quo and protecting our current tax base, but investing in the future in order to remain -- in order to ensure that we remain the economic powerhouse that we are today. This level of thinking is exactly what our city council needs and what I can provide. We need council members that understand that investing in the business community is just not an expense line item on your balance sheet, but it's an investment in our future. For it's only with a strong and successful business community and the taxes generated by them will we be able to protect our quality of life and reaffirm our support in many of the programs that we all have grown to enjoy, such as our libraries, our open space, arts, and recreational programs. Now, I'm a process guy, and I believe that we should hold our elected officials accountable and that they should be accessible. That is why on all my literature, you actually get my personal cell phone number. And if you have any questions, please feel free to give me a call. Again, my name is Justin Waddell, and I'd be honored to have your support.
Walnut Creek has done some good things in the past, and they've done some things that are not so good. And if they'd done everything good in the past, then we wouldn't be talking about budget messes, and we wouldn't be talking about crumbling infrastructure, and we wouldn't be talking about police services that are understaffed and under-resourced. But we are. And we are because 10, 15, 20 years ago, those things were not gauged for today. Even as little as eight years ago, even as little as 12 years ago. I've spent the last 20 years working in government. I've spent the last six years working directly with our local politicians, primarily on law enforcement and budget issues. When I became politically active six years ago, I was somewhat disappointed with the leadership that I saw, and I was disappointed with the process and decision-making that I saw. I felt that there could be somebody that could do something better. I know that we are at a point where we want the next generation, 20, 30 years from now, not to be sitting here listening to somebody tell them that infrastructure is crumbling, that police services are understaffed and under-resourced. We're at a particular point when, if we do the right things and we turn the corner in the right direction, we can leave a much better Walnut Creek, a much stronger Walnut Creek, and one that will be the economic hub of this particular county for years and years to come. But that requires long-term thinking. Unfortunately, folks only think over a two-year budget cycle and how to patch holes. Part of that long-term thinking, for instance, is in fact recognizing that business is the engine which drives tax growth, and allowing you folks to flourish only is going to make us better in the long run down the road. Thanks.
Thank you to all four of our candidates, first of all, for being here this morning and for putting themselves forward for community service. We want to thank Jay Barry Grove, Justin Waddell, Bob Simmons, and Lawwella Haskew. And certainly, we want to thank Scotts for their great service and good food always. Thanks to Walnut Creek Television for videotaping this and providing it to our community. Our thanks, of course, to our wonderful chamber staff and to my fellow Walnut packers. Trust me. And of course, thanks to you for coming out and displaying this interest in your community. What a privilege we have in this blessed land to have choices in elections and in candidates. Now it's up to you. You need to choose those that you're going to support, work for, contribute to, and tell others about, and of course, will vote for on November 6th. It is one of our most precious and primary responsibilities in this republic. And now, as you go about your day and your weekend, God bless you and your families, and we'll see you at the polls on November 6th.